Festerson.
Here.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Pauls.
Here.
Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation by Councilmember Vinnie Palermo?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. Happy Halloween. We are not in costume. We always look this good up here, so in case you're wondering. And I guess with that being said, for us here and everybody at home, keep a watchful eye out for everybody in the community tonight, especially the little ones who will be trick-or-treating. We want our city to stay safe and have a great Halloween. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. Council thanks you all for being here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, I would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to nine relate to the same project. Arbor View located at 208th Avenue and Fort Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six is an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to DR. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to R4. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Arbor View. Item nine, a resolution to approve the Arbor View subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items number six through nine are today. Proponents, please.
250 Regency Circle. We're here today on rezoning, replating, and subdivision agreement approval for the subdivision. It comes to the board with full planning department approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
No.
It's moved and seconded to approve items six through nine. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved, seven to zero. Items 10 to 12 relate to the same project. Spruce 180 located at 180th Street and north of Corby Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG to R4. Item 11, a resolution to approve the final plat for Spruce 180. Item 12, a resolution to approve the Spruce 180 subdivision agreement.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 10 through 12 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Elliott, 17007 Marcy Street, here to represent Spruce 180 LLC, and would ask for your approval of the final plat, which is in conformance with the preliminary plat. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items 10 through 12. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 10 through 12 are approved, seven to zero. Items 13 to 19 relate to the same project. Kings L. Street located at 66 Circle and L. Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR and GC to DR. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR and GC to CC. Item 15, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district. The property located south is 66 Circle and L. Street. Item 16, a resolution to approve the final plat for Kings L. Street addition and to vacate a portion of the existing plat. Item 17, a resolution to approve the Kings L. Street addition replat one subdivision agreement. Item 18, a resolution to approve special use permit application submitted by Russ Larson to allow convenience storage in a CC district. Item 19, a resolution to approve a special use permit application submitted by Russ Larson to allow automotive sales in a CC district.
Public hearing on numbers, number... See if there was anything else. Numbers 13 through 19 are today. Proponents, please.
Jason Thielen, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Suite 100, Omaha 68154. Here on behalf of the applicant, and this is the old Nutrin site on 63rd and L., if you're familiar with that location. So, multiple things going on there, but we're in conformance with the preliminary plat as well as special use that's coming for you. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 13 to 19 are approved, seven to zero. Item 20, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Highlands Ranch located southwest of 222nd and F. Streets with a request of waivers to Section 53-82B cul-de-sac and cul-de-sac length, Section 53-82G street width, Section 53-83 block length, Section 53-93 curb and gutter, and Section 53-99 sidewalks. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend denial of a waiver request of Section 53-910 regarding streetlights.
Public hearing on agenda item number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, City Councilmembers. Jim Bouger, Panzing Hogan Law Firm, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the developer. I have with me today the engineers for the project from E&amp;A Consulting Group, Mark Westergaard and Kyle Boal, and Jeff Lake is here from Summit Development, who's the developer of the subdivision. This is a 270-acre piece of ground that's located between the farm subdivision and the Hampton subdivision at 222nd and F. Street. And we've been working with the neighbors on this project. 60, 60, the preliminary plats for 64 lots, I think we're going to end up somewhere in the, in the range of 68 acreage lots, about three acres or more each lot. And we've been working with the various neighbors to improve upon a few things and work on some common access points and so on. I think that's been going pretty well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have today. We do have a recommendation from the planning department and from the planning board for approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there...
Sorry.
Get your light on. Go ahead. Ms. Melton, go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. Well, I just have a question on here because there was something about the waiver request for the streetlights was denied. What's your position on that? Have you worked that out? Or are you still requesting that we approve it even though it was denied?
So, Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. We have not reached, I guess, a final resolution on this, that issue. We have had discussions with the planning department, and we intend to, in connection with our submission of our final plat and our revised preliminary plat, to work whatever streetlight issues we have out on that. The neighborhood actually is in favor of no streetlights, which we would like to have. But I think that we're probably going to end up having some streetlights. It's what kind of the configuration's going to look like and how many and the location. So, we're, we're confident that we'll work out a resolution with the planning department on that issue.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're ever...
Yeah, I think...
Nobody mentioned it, so you're okay with us just passing it as is?
Yeah, as is today, and then we'll, we'll work out a final resolution in our subdivision agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Jerem.
So, Mr. Kratz is a motion to approve, basically to follow the recommendations of the planning board, which would be to approve the preliminary plat but to deny the waiver at this point of the streetlights.
Paul Kratz, Attorney. That's the way I understand it, yes.
All right. So moved.
Moved and seconded to approve item 20 pending the streetlights. Is that what we're doing?
It's just to follow the recommendations.
Just to follow the recommendations, okay. There are no further lights, and it's been moved and seconded to approve item 20. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 2545 Abbott Plaza from HI to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 22 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 21 is approved, seven to zero. Item 22, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 4114 Corby Street, 4304 Miami Street, 4306 Lake Street, 4219 Corby Street, and 4013 Corby Street from R435 to R4. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 23 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 23. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 23 is approved, seven to zero. Item 24, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate into that district. The property located at 12801 L. Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 24 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24 is approved, seven to zero. Item 25, a resolution to approve the special use permit application submitted by T-Mobile to allow a broadcast tower with a waiver of Section 55-146, height 62 feet, in a R2 district located at 7400 Military Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Darren Hunter. I'm with Centerline Solutions, located at 16035 Table Mountain Parkway, Golden, Colorado. I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve item 25. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 25 is approved, seven to zero. Item 26, a resolution to approve the special use permit application submitted by Prudenco to allow custom manufacturing in a CC district located at 1407 North 203rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 26 is approved, seven to zero. Item 27, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for QuickTrip Corporation doing business as QuickTrip 3201 L. Street.
Good afternoon.
Public hearing on, public hearing on agenda item number 27 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the city council. My name is Danielle Dring of Smith-Slesky Laws, 8712 West Dodge Road, Suite 400. We're here to ask the board, or we're here to ask that you approve our application for a liquor license for new QuickTrip location today.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
My name is Stanford Momarts Brown, 1308 North, Number One, North 40th Street, 68131. And I know it is really, really late in the day, but I would like to speak in opposition to items 27 and 28. Just, I think it's bad policy for any city, town, village, or hamlet to sell liquor at an establishment that also sells gasoline, petrol, fuel of any kind, because I think a good share of that liquor is going to be consumed on the way home behind the wheel. And as I say, I really, I realize it is really, really late in the day for that, but it's never too late to start changing a policy, and it's nothing against the companies in 27 or 28, but somewhere along the way, we need to start reassessing reality, and that's why I oppose both these items. And I can come up again when we get to 28, or you can let this opposition statement stand for both.
Stand for both, okay. Thank you. Rebuttal time?
Yes, Mr. President. Danielle Dring of Smith-Slesky, 8712 West Dodge Road, Suite 400. This is completely permissible, and it's approved use for this type of business. It's also been regularly approved throughout the city. There are numerous QuickTrip locations that also have the same type of liquor license. We're not asking for anything new under these circumstances. So, I still ask that you approve.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Well, you already have rebuttal time, so the public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Dring, I just wanted to thank you for keeping me in the loop throughout this process along with QuickTrip. That area of town needs a little spark, and maybe this will help to get some other interest. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 27. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 28, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Riffs, Inc., doing business as Grover's Quick and Friendly, 5014 Grover Street. A is communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number 28 is today. Proponents, please.
Captain, uh, Furukrakimov, Riffs, Inc., Grover's Quick and Friendly, 5014 Grover Street, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? And your opposition is noted. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Did he want to speak?
Did you want to speak again?
Yes, I forgot to include that I have experience here.
Name and address for the record again, for us.
Okay. Stanford Momarts Brown, 1301, or I'm sorry, 1308 Number One, North 40th Street, 68131. I forgot to mention before that I have experience in that I managed a, it was a blast from the past for Omaha, a 7-Eleven at 24th and Leavenworth and at 24th and I, it was the one that was a half a mile south of there. I can't remember the cross street now, which, both of which sold liquor and gasoline, and one of them also sold diesel fuel. And I was opposed to it at that time and dealt with the situation whereof I speak. And it was not just emotional, but in intellectual and policy involvement, too. And I, I know that there may not have been involvement with, negative involvement with QuickTrip, but it's, it's a policy stand that I think every city that deals with these kinds of convenience stores needs to examine in the long run, and I don't expect you to turn around on a dime and change that. But I, I would like to see the city of Omaha and every city, town, village, and hamlet reexamine their policy on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is officially closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes. If the applicant can come up. Just say your name again, please.
Furukrakimov, Riffs, Inc.
Through, where is this location in comparison to the one that was in that shopping center? Is it the same location?
Correct. It's the same location.
Because this says new application, new location, but I thought it was an existing location.
No, I think they closed a year ago.
Okay.
It's right next to like a Godfather's Pizza.
Right. So, what makes you think that you can have success there versus the one that went out of business about a year ago that was only there a couple of years, by the way?
Correct, yes. I realize that, and then I think they had a, just a limited amount of, as far as like items offered to the community, like to the neighborhood. We actually bring not only a beer or some liquor, but we're also bringing like snacks, candies, like a fountain pop, coffee and cappuccino, all that sort of things that gas stations would have, but without gas, so.
Okay. Well, I wish you luck.
Thanks very much.
It is primarily, I would note, an area where people drive into the store. It's not a neighborhood where a lot of people would be walking in and about, at least in my experience. I think the only person I saw walking around there was when I was walking door to door in the area. So, there weren't really any other walkers. There's the Family Fair grocery store across the street, and there's a laundromat and pizza place, and so there's really not a whole lot pedestrian activity. So, I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve item 28. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 28 is approved, seven to zero. Item 29, an application to appoint Chris Pogorzelski as manager of Aimbridge Concessions, Inc., doing business as Element Omaha Midtown Crossing for their Class CK liquor license located at 3253 Dodge Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 29 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Chris Pogorzelski, 213 South 26th Avenue, Number 4, 68131, here to apply to be appointed manager of the present Class CK liquor license for Aimbridge Concessions, Inc. I'm here to answer all your questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
To approve.
Second. No lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 29 is approved, seven to zero. Item 30, an application to appoint Janelle N. Schenk as manager of Aparium Hotel Group, LLC, doing business as Hotel Deco 15 to their Class C liquor license located at 1504 Harney Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 30 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Janelle Schenk, F&amp;B manager for Hotel Deco 1520 Harney Street, Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 30 is approved, seven to zero. Item 31, an application to appoint Julie A. Horgan as manager of the following Class C liquor licenses. Eagle Run West Golf Partnership, doing business as Champions Run, located at 13800 Eagle Run Drive, and Midwest Golf Operations, doing business as Eagle Run Golf Course, located at 3435 North 132nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 31 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there, I'm Julie Horgan at 1345 Eagle Run Drive.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moving seconded to approve item 31.
Item 31 is approved, seven to zero. Item 32, an application to appoint Brian S. Farber as manager of Walmart Stores, Inc., doing business as Walmart Number 3172, to their Class CK liquor license located at 5051 L Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 32 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Brian Farber, store manager of Walmart 5051 L Street here in Omaha.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 32. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 32 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 33 through 45 were held on October 24th, 2017. Mr. Festerson.
So, Mr. President, don't we take number 41 off for amendment?
Yeah, we take 41 off.
Okay. Did we do that?
I was about to say that.
So, we need to change the motion on to remove number 41.
Moved and seconded to approve all the items with the exception of 41. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
So, items 33 to 45 minus item 41 are approved, seven to zero. Item 41, a special ordinance levying a special assessment for fines and civil penalties on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group number 2017-01.
Public hearing on agenda item number 41 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
We just need to make a motion to bring the assessment back to its original amount, $5,250 on address 705 Durkast Street in this group. So, I would make that motion.
Second. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a question, so if one of the directors could answer. It seemed, I mean, this gentleman came up and made a very impassioned plea to remove this last time, and I think traveled all the way from Florida, if I remember right. And was there any further communication? I guess Jay is not here, so...
No, Jay's here.
You did a good job for a while.
Yeah, I did, didn't I? Jay Davis, Assistant Planning Director. That's correct. There were no further communication, there were no further communication I'm aware of. One of the requirements you put on him was he had to put the property on a multiple listing service. It is not as of yesterday. It was listed for sale on Zillow by owner, which is not MLS listing for us. So, at that point, nothing's been done that you would ask him to do or we would ask him to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Palermo.
Thank you. I guess just a quick question for you, too. So, have you been backed by the property? Have they did anything to it since?
I have not been by the property personally. Our inspector has been backed by, really, the corner wasn't fixed on the house, as far as I know. Otherwise, it's still status quo, as we saw the day it was here for board requisition.
So, I guess if he had had some work done to it, that might help me a little bit on this not being listed. But if we don't know, then we'll just take it for what it is. Thank you.
Mr. Jarrett.
It's a real head-scratcher. I mean, of all the properties that we've seen that were abandoned and neglected, I haven't seen one with less damage or in better condition than this one was. And all he said he wanted to do was sell the house, and to demonstrate his commitment to that, was asked as a condition of the reduction to list it with MLS, and then nothing happened. So, I just don't get why in the world we're here where we are. But given that he's made the choice to do what he's done or not do, I'll support the amendment.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve item, approve the amendment to item 41. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment is approved, seven to zero.
Do it as amended, or is it...
Mm-hmm.
As amended.
As amended.
Second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 41 is approved, as amended, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items numbers 46 through 60 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Hello. I'd like to speak out as a proponent for item 56. My name's Ryan Morrissey. I live at 6112 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I wanted to speak out in support of One Omaha. They've helped my neighborhood out a lot in the Benson neighborhood, and then with the leadership programs that this is for. They're helping to create new neighborhood leaders, as well as provide resources and skills to the current neighborhood leaders in Omaha.
Thank you.
Hello, also a proponent of item number 56.
Name an address for the record, please.
Michael McGuire, 2402 South 13th Street.
Thank you.
And I'm a lead program coordinator for One Omaha, and this is for support through the Community Services Fund of Nebraskans for Civic Reform, who is our fiscal agent. And I just wanted to say that this is a really significant amount of support to us that kind of allows a foundation for us to grow with, through other support sources. And this specific leadership program helps us develop and grow the capacity of neighborhood leaders in all seven council districts and the volunteer-led associations that they represent, who are currently, those volunteers are investing over a million dollars a year worth of volunteer time into making neighborhoods in Omaha a better place for all. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 46 through 60. There are no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 46 through 60 are approved, seven to zero. Item 61, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for pending litigation entitled Elizabeth Bennet versus City of Omaha in the amount of $137,500.
Public hearing on agenda item number 61 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarrett.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.